Please until. Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. John, will you do roll call for us, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert. Commissioner Duckett.
Here.
Commissioner Hansett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. Town Administrator Carl Snyder.
Here.
Police Chief David Burse.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond. Town Clerk John Hootson here.
Okay, thank you. Well, guys, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We will review the agenda now. John, can you read through the items for us, please?
Will do. Call to order, roll call, Pledge of Allegiance, review of agenda. Business, Better City, board discussion. Financial package, board discussion. Snowplow and assembly, board discussion. Ordinance 2019-02 and Code of Conduct, board discussion. Number one, amend ordinance 2019-02 Code of Conduct. Two, Town of Upper Marlboro Historical Committee Memo. Three, ordinance 2022-07 Historical Committee. E, Resident Assistance Program, board discussion. F, Parking Legislation Package, board discussion. G, Government Structure Accountability and Ethics Board, board discussion. H, RFP Cleaning and Media, board discussion. Second page, six, preliminary approval of next meeting agenda. Seven administrative updates. We've got the service lane dumpster agreement. There's also three other items there. Eight is motion to go into closed session.
Yes, so I'm asking that we remove item G from the list. And then I also want to know, is Better City actually presenting tonight? Because this is a heavy agenda for Tuesday night. When it's election day. I can't, we can't hear you.
Better City is here, and they are planning to come to all of our work sessions because they're doing our economic development. And so that gets them engaged, and we can speak to them and see what they're doing. So that we're all engaged in the process. So they won't take too much of our time, I don't believe. And then.
But I like to talk about all of our work sessions, but for tonight, I'll, this is fine. But G, I'm asking that we remove that to remove that off the meeting agenda for tonight.
Okay, so I'm just gonna ask that to be put into a motion for voting because I know that, like, in October, when we talked about it, we committed to, or at least I committed to making sure that we did that in hand in hand with the financial package. So if it's different direction, I just want to make sure it's voted on. So. Is there a motion to remove item G from the business agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? If there's no second, what happens, John?
Motion dies and there's, it does not go forward.
Okay. Okay. So we'll leave that on there. We don't have to talk about it long. If that helps. All right. So, oh, I was just gonna say, with the closed session, with Commissioner Lot not being here, I'm concerned, but maybe we can talk about that more at the end. Before we go in, and John, you can advise, like, we may have to go in anyway.
Yeah, that is supposed to have unanimous of everybody. So everyone should be present for this closed session.
So then can we make a decision now that we'll just hold off on that?
Yeah, we just need to have one with everyone at it before the next meeting. Or we're voting kind of blind.
Well, then we could do that when the agenda is not so packed.
So we're. I don't, so there's, there's a personnel matter that's related to an item that is a problem that needs to be dealt with and addressed and voted on. And we shouldn't be talking about that individual personnel matter in public meeting. So.
Can you tell us which, which ordinance that, which, which item that is?
Yeah, so the whole thing that happened with the Historic Committee ordinance, I mean, it needs to happen anyway, so it's not necessarily related to the personnel matter, but like, we have to discuss the personnel matter related to the Historic Committee.
Can we see if we can get everyone together, like, next Tuesday night for, like, ten, twenty minutes? Just a quick one item. That's just my thought.
Yeah, let's talk about this a little more later. Because since it's been advertised, we could always just vote not to go into it later, and I don't want to hold up Better City too much longer. So let's leave that for now, and we'll vote on it and discuss it at the end. So that we can let Better City go forward, which we can do now. I think we have Jason Godfrey here from Better City.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Happy election night. The, the pleasure to be here. Really, we'll be brief. Just wanted to formally kick off our, our engagement with the city. We're extremely excited to have this opportunity to work with, with everyone in the city and, and help out with, with revitalizing downtown and creating a strategic plan around how to create more vitality and more, more diversification, and really to, to create synergies among all the different elements to, to create a, a plan for Upper Marlboro that'll, that'll move the seat forward. And that's, that's really our, our, our goal here. Just some quick highlights, working on the data and doing a lot of research and looking at past studies. And then on, in the next little while, we'll be sending out an email, actually it'll come from Kyle, stating that we're gonna start interviews. And so all of you, as commissioners, will, will be in, receiving that invitation and other people throughout the community. I think we've got, I think thirty or so already that we've identified that we want to talk to, and we'll expand from there. And then on the week of November twenty eighth, we will be in town and connecting in-person interviews. So if any of you want to speak to us in person, we can wait till then. If you want to do it virtually, we can, we can pull those forward and do those anytime in a couple of weeks. And that'll form the basis for the, the analysis and the, and the strategy planning at that point. So Mayor, anything else that you want us to go over at this point?
I guess partly I just wanted the commissioners all to have a chance to kind of let you know if there's any areas they wanted you to focus on. Anything, you know, you have all these cool data packages and survey packages. That's so we're gonna be having some data, and they have a cool website they're working on building out for interaction and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, that should be launching soon, and we'll, where the citizens will be able to come, come and leave comments. And there's a map where you can say, hey, I think we need a coffee shop here and so forth, and, and leave comments. We'll also be working on a survey, and we have a really powerful data tool that will be able to track where residents or where people are coming from, and, and where they come to Upper Marlboro, where they spend time, how much money they spend, their psychographics, and really help to create a granular understanding of what's driving visitorship now, so you can target that going forward. So we're really excited to dig deeper into all that and, and present that as part of our, the total package of, you know, where we're at to, to determine where, where to go next.
So you said that's coming soon?
Yeah, over the next, within the next, by the end of the month, we should be wrapping up the data analysis and really looking at those data tools and be able to present all that.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
Yep.
How do you pull the data?
So lots of sources. So you've got BEA data, census data, Bureau of Labor Statistics. So we, we have these a program that pulls it from all these sources and puts it into a dashboard. The dashboard will actually put on your website. You can actually have that data to, to present on your website. The visitor ship data comes from a company called DataFi, which is our sister company. And it tracks data through cellphone usage and, and, and payment methods and so forth. It's all anonymized. But that's how the specific visitor data is, is, is collated.
Thank you. Is it similar to Placer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. You know that?
Yeah, I use it.
Okay, there you go. Well, you can instruct us then.
All right. I think that's all the commissioners that are here. So thank you for your time, and we'll be in touch.
Great. I'll just listen in now. That's okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll move on to item number B, Financial Package Discussion. Don't think there's much discussion because it's just getting to the public hearing at the end of the month, but does anyone have anything? Okay. So we will move on to item number C, or letter C, which is the Snowplow and Assembly. Director Bond, I think you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. Um, just a quick breakdown. The Fisher Snow, the Fisher salt spreader that we, that you guys elected to, well, that we elected to fix earlier this year, I believe it was January, and $2,500 was dedicated towards that cause to fix it. However, Kohler Equipment, which is our equipment specialist, they're saying that the quotes that Fisher supplied them when the parts were actually made available was higher than what they quoted us. The second thing is, they don't believe that the parts will fix all of the issues because that unit is really plagued with electrical issues. And third, they don't recommend fixing it for the simple fact that they still haven't fixed the main component in the manufacturing process, which is the steel conveyor belt, which is super prone to being corroded, which shortens the lifespan. What they're suggesting is we take that money and put it towards a new spreader. And since we have the truck, the used truck three, six, four, that we purchased earlier this year, it has no plow, no spreader, anything like that. So my thought was that we could use some of, use the 2,500, put that towards completely outfitting this vehicle, and to sort of bring costs down. I did a price point of, you know, without the plow, because that is the main component. However, I believe, and I would have to, you know, double check my figures, but I believe we would have the money to cover it out of the unused salary for the crewman position. If we decided to go with, with plow, spreader, and all of the wiring harness and frame attachments. The price without the plow is 6,354. The price with the plow is 11,400, and there may be a rebate in it that'll bring that to, like, high ten is what I'm being told. But worst case scenario, eleven four. At this point, I'll take any questions if anyone has any, and I thank you guys for your time.
So, sorry. I have a question. So it sounds like, it sounds like the money has been appropriated in the sense that you would be using the money from a salary position that have not hired for. So then it sounds like the, the, well, the revenue is there. And so, of course, this is not something that, my question is, this is clearly something that you need in order to be effective. Should it snow, or should we have any issues in the town this winter? Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, the truck that we have that is completely outfitted at this time is the truck that I drive, which is two sixteen. That has an eight-foot plow along with an in-bed salt spreader, which is just like the one that I'm proposing. And that holds, just to give you an idea, roughly ninety, ninety, fifty-pound bags of salt. It's two point, I believe it's two point seven cubic yards. The, if that truck is to go down, if that truck and/or spreader was to go down, our next line of defense is a tailgate spreader that mounts inside of the tow hitch, which holds roughly ten bags of salt. So, yeah.
Well, thank you.
And Will, we've kind of gone over the budget a couple of times loosely to see this probably can work. We're gonna go over it tightly over the next week or two to see if we have to do it without the plow or with the plow. So that when we come to the meeting on the twenty-second, we'll have which we're voting on. Any other questions, comments? Okay. We will move on to item D, which is the Ordinance 2019-02 and Code of Conduct. It's kind of combining a whole bunch of things because they're all related. So the first thing I kind of want to get out of the way before I turn this over to Kyle is at the last meeting, I told Patty Caldecott that I had asked her to reduce the board members to three people. I went back and looked, and what I had actually asked her to do was change her residency requirements. So I have to apologize. She's not on here. I don't think. So I'll let her know as well over email, but I have to apologize for misremembering what I had asked for. I realize that this kind of felt like it came out of the blue. It is tied to that personnel issue, and it is related to a person who we've had closed session personnel discussions about before. The Historic Committee is aware of the issue, and they were alerted by staff. But overall, the point was in just, it was, how do we deal with a situation where we have a litigious person involved who may come back to have us incur some additional legal costs while fixing a problem, right? So the problem is, the Historic Committee has a different set of rules than all the other committees. So it just made sense to say, okay, let's just move them, and everyone has the same set of rules, and felt like this wouldn't be a big deal. I understand that it was upsetting to people, so I want to give everyone, before we get into this, everyone can have two minutes to kind of say their piece about how they felt about the whole thing, and then that way we can focus on the actual work.
For me, I felt that, I thought that it was, is, was unnecessary, actually. I would have liked to seen it be handled better and have a discussion with them. Even if it was something that came down to, we need an answer sooner than later. I think we need to just do a better job working with our committees, because this is a very important committee to the town. These people have been dedicated to the, to that, to the role and what they do and what they could, what they contribute for years. I don't even know anyone in the town that would be able to have as much information or, or passion to actually oversee that and, and contribute as much as they do. So I just think that we need to do a better job when it comes to communicating agenda, things that we need in order to bring them maybe i- in a better place or communicate information to them so that they'll know where we stand. And so we just can't do things abruptly. You know, because this created a huge uproar. I don't think it was necessary. I don't want to see those people resign from the committee. And I'm hoping, what I recommend is that we allow John and Kyle to at least start, have, have a conversation with them to see where they are. Because we need to salvage this committee. It is, is very important to the town and everything that they have done to help us and to keep us where we are. So there just needs to be more discussion. And I think that if we can appoint Kyle and John to start to open up that discussion, that would be, that would be an ideal way to go.
Tommy, I'm gonna let you speak.
Yeah, I just think it just needs to be discussed and, you know, possibly an email chain or to see what we can do to rectify or yeah, just, I just wish it went down a little better, but there's nothing we can do at this point. I'd like to see what we can do to get past it.
So a lot of this was to be the topic of the closed session because we are going to have to talk about individual people and personnel issues, and there was communication on that front between staff and the committee. So without the closed session, I think we're continuing to be at a standstill, so we'll have to address that at the end of the meeting again. But for now, we're gonna, we're gonna put this on the, kind of putting an arrow to the closed session for us to bring this topic back up when we get there. For now, I want to just kind of get into the meat of what the ordinance does and all that kind of thing. And I will also note that after an issue with another committee earlier in this year, we had decided that we wanted to, we're gonna Code of Conduct, and it turns out that 2019-02 kind of has a Code of Conduct in it already that pretty much covered that issue with some minor changes. So Kyle, I'm gonna let you, Administrator Snyder, kind of present everything to us. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. So just give some background. Ordinance 2019-02 was kind of like a umbrella ordinance to authorize a bunch of different committees, the Arts Council, the Events Committee, Green Team, Certain Team and whatnot. So that was a discussion that came out after, obviously, we have the Historical Committee. They were established in 2012. They were the only committee at the time. So they had an ordinance. And then when we had kind of all these other work organizations and bodies kind of flutter up, 2018, 2019, it was decided instead of passing an ordinance for each committee, we just do this umbrella ordinance. They each get a resolution and moving forward. So some of the discussions have been possibly just bringing the historical committee under ordinance 2019-02. I think after some of the discussions that were had, there may be some tweaks we have to make to 2019-02 to make it comfortable for the committees and to kind of fit a bit better. And then we can establish the store committee, they can have a resolution, all that. And bring them up under there. So and like the mayor said, there is a Code of Conduct for committee members and how they kind of portray themselves and put themselves forward as appointees of the town.
And there are, I think we put those tweaks in to 2019-02. What you're looking at is the proposed revisions to 2019-02. So really, it should be called 2022, whatever, twenty five or six or whatever we're on. Because there were changes that needed to be made to this that are made in it. And I believe the draft version y'all got on Tuesday had them with, like, actual track changes on. So I can send that out again, but since I hadn't read this whole ordinance, I think you know, we all want to review everything. So does anyone have any comments or concerns about the content of 2019-02 with the adjustments that were made to it?
Not at this time.
Yeah. Not, especially not right now.
So if you have anything that comes up before the meeting, because we'll want to introduce it at the November twenty-second meeting. So the more stuff we can vote on, the more stuff comes off the agenda. That's how we're gonna.
Yeah. Can you speak specifically, Kyle, on what the adjustments that were, point those out?
Let me try and pull up the draft agenda that was sent out. That's gonna be easy for me to pick it out.
Okay. Was this on track changes, you said?
Yeah, the one that was sent out Tuesday. Here we go. Yeah, so it's, uh, no, that's purchasing contracts. Oh, this one does not track change.
Oh, I sent it with track changes, but I can tell you what the changes are. If you go into section E, it, you, I used to say that it had to be a resident unless the bylaws said otherwise, which all of the committee bylaws do. So it's now changed to say you can be a resident, a business owner of the town or the greater Upper Marlboro area. You know, so we don't have people from, like, Virginia that are members, right? And then everything else in there is correct, or is this correct, is the same. And then the other change got made. There might have been a change in the compensation to go through the treasurer. No, there wasn't. Okay. Is in the liability and indemnification communications. So that kind of like protects the members, but it also creates an email account. It describes, like, behavior with the email account. And then it also deals with public speaking and communication from the committee, email and social media accounts, so that, like, the, we don't have committee members going to, you know, going kind of outside and representing themselves as representatives of the government with regards to things that aren't related to their committee or other, which is like a, a secondary personnel problem we actually have to talk about. It's like, you know, more than one thing. And you guys all got an email from me this week that kind of illustrates that issue. So that's where the changes were. And I, oh, I, you know what else I added is that if the, so item five under G said that if the, basically if a member was behaving in a disruptive way, the committee leadership could remove that member. And I added to say that the committee leadership or the Board of Commissioners can remove that member.
And the residency requirement, that's just for the, the appointed board of the committee that they could still, like, someone from Virginia could serve on the committee itself as a member, but they can't sit on the board of the committee. Is that correct?
Yeah, the board is the one making the decisions, like, ultimately, they're the ones voting and leading the committee. So I think if, if they're, they should be members of our community.
So those folks are, are, so for some, I'm struggling to find that one, but I don't know if this is a packet that I picked up earlier, but. So those folks are you, or so for some, I'm struggling to find that one, but I don't know if this is packet that I picked up earlier, but um. Okay, so the individuals that are on the board, um, so I think because the last issue. Or maybe just correct me, um, if that's not right. I think uh, some of them, the concern was people could not be on the committee. If they were not residents of the town.
So the way it was written before was that. Correct unless the bylaws allowed them, unless the individual committee's bylaws allowed them to not be residents of the town. Which the historic committee's bylaws do. So even though they were concerned about the residency requirement, it didn't apply to them because they have bylaws. That say that it doesn't apply to them. But I changed it in here because I think. We all agreed when we were talking about all the committee bylaws back in like February, March, that. You know, we wanted to allow for more people to come into these committees. I mean, ma- many of our most active committees have a lot of people who aren't. In the town, and I think because of the size of our town, we wouldn't really be able to support committees without. Uh, having members come from the area.
I don't have any further questions about it. I just think um, overall, like my previous comment is that we just, there needs to be a. A deeper discussion just to bring the them up to speed, hear what they have to say. And then also, you know, with an apology, because you know, and I understand that what you just said and. And I think it needed to happen, but I think it needs to, you know, a board apology that because that's not the way that we should be doing things and. And I think we want to make sure that we can keep our committees that are working and active, engaged and and um. You know, we just need to make things right. So, um, that's where I stand for it now.
So um, I just. I'm gonna just share my kind of opinion here, which is that when this elected board. Is going to consider and make decisions. It shouldn't be that volunteers from a committee come in and say, if you decide this, we all quit. Um, I don't think that's appropriate behavior from board members. So. While it especially because they knew what the problem was and staff communicated the problem to them. So. I don't think that. It's necessarily. As cut and dry. I think there's different thoughts on that. But we can discuss that aspect of it. But again, that aspect of it doesn't actually affect the. Legislation itself.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and and I do agree with what you're saying. Yes, we can't just, I mean, someone just can't. Because they decide that they don't agree with it, say, we're all going to resign. But if there's an issue in the way that we communicate the issue, to communicate the concern. And I mean, there's some areas where I know that we 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 can take responsibility for that too. So I I don't say and I don't agree with. You know, folks just using that as an opportunity to say, well, this is my opportunity to just control the situation and to get what I want. No. But if we spark people and spark committees by not properly communicating or giving them the information in advance. Then that's something we need to look at.
I mean, I I definitely hear you. It's just that there was a conversation um. Through staff, and that's why I want to have the closed session so we can kind of discuss that in a little more depth without putting, it is. Not my intention, nor is it appropriate for me to like start saying names and how things happened. Um, because that's not for an open meeting. So I just, that's why I want to have the closed session. Um, there's other things we need to discuss in closed session like the RFPs, but we'll have to figure that out at the end. So it sounds like so this will be introduced along with ordinance twenty twenty two. I don't know, I says twenty twenty two oh seven. That's an error too. Um, I think it's twenty seven, the historical committee, the. The ordinance regarding the historical committee is just the part that puts them under. The same as everyone else. And then there's the amendments to the one for everyone. That addresses concerns that. How, you know, we've all talked about already. In the past with other committees as well. So those two can go on our introduced. For November twenty second.
The uh, seventh crack, it's the seventh ordinance. We're on twenty seven resolutions.
I was thinking of the resolution. You're right. Okay, so twenty twenty two is seven. And then so really the. Twenty twenty nineteen would be twenty twenty two oh eight. Because we're amending it, right? Okay. So that will go there. All right, so let's move to, if no one else has anything else. To the Resident Assistance Program. Um, so this is pretty straightforward unless we want to discuss more, but. Basically, we had an ad hoc committee. They awarded some resident assistance. It worked really well. It went smoothly. And so. All that we're saying is, do we want to just make that the formal way that and. That the financial assistance is doled out going forward. Each department will send a representative from their department. We will have, you know, one of the churches, whoever can send a representative at that time. Um, and a resident who is obviously not the resident receiving financial aid or related to them in any way. Just kind of meet and go through that. And is that okay with everyone? Um, and if yes, we'll just vote on that formally again in November.
So how will the resident be chosen? How, what is the selection process for these?
Um, I mean, I thought to ask Evelyn Stevens because she has. Kind of the time and availability to do that, and she is a very thoughtful um, resident. Uh, but we can, we could just all nominate. A resident, right? And then. It would be Kyle would send out an email to those five residents saying, we need to make a decision. Here are the times who's available.
Hmm, we we like to see and open this up to see if there's anyone in the on the call that is from the town. Um, that would be interested in participating with this. To get a public comment about it. We might be able to pull a few people that may just be interested right now.
Um, the only person on the call right now is Linda, and she usually has problems speaking. So maybe if she's interested in being that resident, she can email info. Um.
Can we can get a public comment though? Ask for a public comment. She the only one that's on the call?
Mm-hmm. Jason Godfrey is from Better City and Ray Feldman is our media.
Yeah, I'm just now looking on it.
Yeah, she, if she, if she's interested, she can email um, the info and let us know.
So so outside of that, so are you gonna put, so how, so again, so how are they? Are you going to advertise this? Or like, I'm just trying to figure out how, even though you have one person like, and I agree with Miss Evelyn Stevens. I think she's wonderful. Um, she's commit, uh, she's contributed a lot um, to the committee of the S C W G. But I'm wondering if she's not available, because I know her schedule, what it is in the sense that, you know, she's very busy and, you know. He's retired and has at times travel. So if she's not available, then what is the plan to? Um, enlist other residents that may be. That would participate in this. And then also with the church, are we just counting on providence or? Do we have backups? Like, how are we looking to?
My thought was to um, work through the outreach folks that I know for the churches and just see. Which pastors, actually the pastors have a groups who can work through that, which pastors are willing to sit on that committee. And honestly, just like rotate the first invitation, like so if it's Providence last time, let's ask. United this time and Trinity next time and Saint Mary's the next, kind of. And we could do that with the residents too, is like we could just. Put them in alphabetical order and go down the list each time, um, so that it's very random. And everyone gets a chance to participate.
Good. So how will we, how would we in, how would we capture? How are you? I'm just saying, how are we enlisting those people? I mean, are we basing this on committees that we already have, people that are already? Like in town residents or what does that look like to actually, are are you just handpicking or?
The residents or the church representatives?
The residents, the residents.
So the residents, I asked Evelyn because I knew that we were doing an ad hoc committee. Uh, if we're all comfortable with Evelyn, like we can nominate her and vote on it, but maybe we can have like two or three people. Nominated, but again, like. So I I would nominate Evelyn Stevens to be on this board. Um, if you guys want to put in nominations. Between now and the twenty second, or actually between now and the nineteenth. Then we can have the whole list of residents who will be chosen from the list. Um, and. We can vote on that. But we, I mean, I think we probably only need three, but if everyone wants to nominate someone, then we can have five. This just kind of depends.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll get that together and I'll look for emails nominating um, residents. So we'll move on. Sorry, Tommy, did you have anything on that?
I do not. The only thing I was thinking like just have a backup just in case, but that's all.
All right, um, so we're going on to the parking legislative package. Um, and this is what Kyle's put together. Based on the input that we gave him at the October work session. So um, Administrator Snyder, you can have a floor.
Sure, uh, there are two resolutions before you. One is for um, the actual parking ticket amounts and the other is for the uh. Parking meter rates and times. So I'll briefly go over the first on the parking meter fines. Um, so talking to Town Attorney Best, he's kind of drafted up a new resolution from this. Um, and I'm working with him to see if there's a couple violations. I didn't have to talk to chief as well. Um, that we did not have before that, um, is just for some background, we're kind of piggybacking off Prince County is updating their rates. And they added a couple interesting categories such as like damaging parking meters. So if someone hits a parking meter, we can give them a ticket for that. Um, if you park an electric vehicle charging station spot, which have, obviously they're becoming more popular, that's another ticket. Um, so we may, in talking to him, we may have to. Uh, go through and amend the traffic parking ordinance, um, which I was trying to avoid, not push too much legislation through. So we may end up having to do some minor tweaks to the traffic parking ordinance after all. Um, unless we wanted to kind of let sleeping dogs lie and kind of up the fines we have now and move forward. So that's something I gotta talk to chief about. Um, or if any board members have any strong opinions on that. Um, but you can see um, the highlights on page uh. Forty three. Packet, yeah, I have, um, so you can see it's going up from like twenty five dollar citations to thirty five dollar citations. And fifty dollar citations are going up to sixty dollar citations. Um, and there's a couple one like parked on public spaces, the expiration tag is going up to a hundred. Um, so there is an updated resolution that Kevin did, um, which will have ready for the uh. Introduction or passage at the November town meeting. Um, and these rates don't go into effect until January twenty twenty three to give us time to update the system and all that. Um, any questions on the parking fines and? That resolution. Not, we can go up to the parking meter rates and times. I know that's the more interesting one. Uh, so as the mayor mentioned, that is the one that uh. Uh, the board kind of gave feedback. They wanted the same rate, two thousand fifty cents up until um, ten o'clock at night. Uh, Monday through Saturday free on Sunday. So that's the way this is written right now. So. Um, Main Street, Prairie, Washington, Judge Drive, Elm Street, two dollars fifty cents per hour, Monday through Saturday. Um, hours of six AM until ten PM with the exception of all day Sunday, federal holidays. Uh, the governor and Boo Drive mean rates has not changed or the time. It's still two dollars fifty cents, Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM. And then it becomes free after hours on Saturdays and on weekends because uh. There's nothing down there, no businesses or anything. The county administration buildings closed and it's the only parking available for the uh, schoolhouse pond. Schoolhouse pond doesn't have its own parking, um, so the people going there can can enjoy free parking there. And then also we put some stuff in about the challenged church street parking lot. So we're looking to raise that dollar from fifty cents an hour to a dollar an hour. Um, because it thought was always keeping off-street lots a little bit cheaper. Um, so people would park in those more long-term and keep Main Street open for the quick turnarounds. Um, and then we also extended the hours for Church Street and any other, um, we added in there any other off-street parking lots owned or managed by the town. So it's if we purchase any other lots, the county turns lots over to us or we enter into a private partner. Public-private partnership with any of the businesses or property understand have town who have a parking lot for us. That they'd like us to maintain into a cost sharing. So that's Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM. So it's free after five PM. On Saturdays and holidays, Sundays, holidays, so.
I'll say I like that. That's exactly what I thought was necessary.
Um, with the, oh, let me, um. Um, with the Governor Bowie, oh, so the two dollars and fifty cent, that is where I feel like, um, in terms of that pricing. Let me see, Monday through, well, if you send money through Saturday between the hours, six AM and six PM with the exception of. All day Sunday and observe for the holidays. So two dollars and fifty cent per hour, Monday through Saturday between six. Six AM to six PM.
It's a ten PM, uh, or is it, oh, Governor and Boo Drive, I'm sorry, is that what you're saying? Yeah, it should be.
The six PM was a typo. You guys asked for ten, but I.
I know. Ten, ten is a little bit excessive. And the reason why I say that, so I'm glad it's it's here, because I feel like based on that. Um, when I looked at um. The amount of monies that we were collecting in one area was talking about two percent. And so. I think that in order to continue to help businesses thrive. Um, because this is where the contention is, is with those businesses that are open late, which is primarily, of course, OTI. Domino's, which is normally a lot of delivery and Lido's. Um, and then of course the China restaurant, but it seems like that's a lot of pickup as well, a lot of, you know, well, a pickup. So. I'm just thinking if we can, if we're able, I think it would be best to modify this and make sure, I think ten PM. Is excessive, because I don't think the monies that we're collecting from seven PM to ten PM. Is going to make or break us. I don't think if it's, we're talking about two percent of revenue, then. And there's, and we have minimal parking spots as it, as it is, I don't think that it would be a. Huge pivot to make this six AM to six PM. Because the thing is, I think that if we don't work with our businesses, we're gonna lose our businesses. Because if parking, parking is a premium, we all know that here in the town. I don't know why we would not be able to help support them with reducing that to six PM. And then I think also with signage, I don't know, and I'm, this is a question. Could, is there a way or do we already have signage? That's the question. Do we already have signage? Kyle, this is a question for you. Do we already?
Chief, actually.
Oh, for chief.
Yeah, he can explain the signage thing. I just think he talked about in October as well, but.
Okay, do we already have signage that says parking is free? Governor Bowie Drive between this time and this time. Is it clear enough? Because I think that if if it's not, then we need to make it clear, because when I think about going. DC and I go into areas that I have to walk to get to the restaurant and when I, I don't mind. Because if it's free, I'm like, I don't mind walking. Um, so I'm thinking if we're able to direct those folks. Because there's not enough parking, whatever the case, you know, there's not enough parking. Then we can, we can make it clear that, hey, they're free parking. And and I don't know that especially it's gonna definitely benefit OTI. I mean, the people that park near. Um, past the park, past the traffic light, um, I think those spaces move pretty frequently, even though they're Lido's. It's it's, you have more parking there or more opportunity to park and go into that Lido's. And then Domino's, they pick up. So I just want to know, is there signage? And then Domino's, they pick up. So I just want to know, is there signage that says, hey, there's free parking? If there's no parking here, you don't want to pay, go to Bowie Park, Governor Bowie Drive.
So the answer to your question is no. So that is what, even at the last meeting, I stated, once this is clearly defined, what we're doing, what the hours are going to be. The signage will be pretty much mirroring what you see. Like in DC, it'll say a total number of hours from. Whatever AM to whatever PM, Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday. And anytime after that, you know that it's free, that we're going to have the signs consistent with what you see generically around the state and around the country. That's one thing. The other part of it is. The signs that we currently have do not say free parking anywhere because it's. If, you know, it doesn't say that. So the signs that we would get would not specifically say free parking. It'll just tell you the times that you're supposed to park, which are from the morning to the evening. And then the other part, when you talked about the monies collected. After five o'clock. So what I did was I had code officer Stewart give me a report that when we started doing enforcement in August. So if you figure we started in August, it's actually twenty seven, it's actually twenty eight days. But she actually worked twenty six of those days. And out of the twenty six days from five to eight PM. In a couple of days, it was until ten. She wrote a total of a hundred and fifteen citations. In that after five PM timeframe. So within twenty six, twenty seven days, she wrote a hundred and fifteen citations. Which to me kind of verifies that people are not paying the meter after five o'clock. Which is the reason why you see a low percentage because they're not paying the meters at all. Which I've seen consistently after hours. So it's up to the board to decide what you guys do, but I'm just saying. I see the meters on red. We have the data to show that people are not paying because a hundred and fifteen tickets in twenty seven days is a lot. So I'm just throwing that out there for everybody to know and understand. And that's up until last week, it was a hundred and fifteen in the twenty six days of.
So what is that? A hundred and fifteen tickets in twenty seven days.
Like four a night or something.
Well, some nights it was wars, some nights it was, it was, you know, one night it was eleven. I think the other night I told you guys it was thirteen.
But on, but four a night.
I think it's because they're not ticketing every night. So it's really like.
It's not every night. It's only two nights a week and some nights she doesn't work the whole night. So that's what I'm saying. It's, even it's an average of four a night, it's still a hundred and fifteen in twenty seven days is a lot. Because like I said, one of the particular nights she had seven, seven.
Technically eight days is what you're saying, chief. It's like not twenty seven days, it's eight days.
No, I'm saying it's a total of twenty seven days because it's two days a week. From August till last.
Oh, okay.
August to this month is twenty.
Okay.
So like I said, some nights is more than others.
Okay.
Yeah, what are you talking about? August, September, October, and now November, right? Well, oh.
It's real, it's. Really, it's three months, yes.
Yeah, three months, three months.
That's five thousand dollars in tickets.
Well, I'm just saying, she's only putting tickets on cars who are not paying and it's.
Right, probably almost five grand.
So I, I do want. Yeah, I do. I just want to ask because Kyle brought something up at the October session. Kind of about turning off meters and chief is kind of mentioning it as well about like supply and demand of meters. So I'm just going to ask you to do that again, Kyle.
Oh, sure. So there's always the fear of turning off the meter, not really fear so much, but. At one point, he's going to be using those parking spaces because we have a couple of different actors at play, especially between. I mean, during the day, obviously, the courthouse is the is the main factor, Monday to Friday. However, we do have some other factors there like the library, the other businesses that are there and even residents who live. Above some of those commercial properties there. So some of the discussions we had was like, look, what if we do turn the meters off after six o'clock? But the library has actually been having record attendance on a lot of their evening programming. And so if they have like, they're having a nineties trivia night. On Saturday, the twelve, if anyone's free. But so like if all their people just park on Main Street, sort of driving behind and they're blocking the OTI restaurant and customer parking. And then we get complaints because that's the only parking that OTI has is right there on the street. And then, you know, I mean, that could create some, that should, I'm just trying to seed all the different scenarios, what kind of conflicts we may see. Versus if we have a very small charge, that incentivizes them to, okay, well, maybe I will drive and park behind the library or park a little further away. Or if I am parking, I'm going to pay to park. So there's just some scenarios like that, or even if the people who live. In a couple of those commercial buildings next to OTI, we have some people living on the second floor. Instead of parking behind the building, driving back the alleyway, they're like, oh, shoot, well, I'm going to just. Six o'clock on Friday, I'm going to park here right in front of OTI and my car is going to sit there till Monday at seven AM. And we probably get calls. So that's. It's a delicate balance access. That's where we could open ourselves up to, but if we just have a very small charge. That kind of, it kind of keeps some sort of control over what happens on on the on street parking on Main Street. Because that's the first thing is like if we have someone that's parking complaints or taking up all the parking spots, the on street parking spots. One of the first things we can look at is like, well, did they pay the meter? If not, we can start issuing tickets, but. So that's a kind of something we talked about.
Yeah, and I'm kind of interested, Jason, just raise your hand if you have kind of like an economic development wisdom nugget to share with us. Because it's this thing where if we have no fee after six, right? And then everyone's parking on the street. Then we have to come back and add a fee from six to ten, which is like a whole challenging situation. Whereas if we lower the fee to a dollar after or even fifty cents after six, between six and ten. And people are still putting money in the meter. And if parking gets tight on the street, then. And people are coming and complaining, it's, it feels like easier to say, okay, we're going to charge. We were charging seventy five cents. Now we're going to charge a dollar twenty five and see if that like. Helps the situation on the street. Like if it's free, maybe I'm just going to sit in OTI all night and now. Donal has me sitting at the booth and he's not making as much money as he can if I leave and turn it over. So that's kind of my thought on like, if we can charge something. But I think we want to do something like two fifty doesn't make sense. Once the courthouse is closed, I agree with that. Because, you know, two fifty is helping our businesses still have some parking during the day. But then after hours, you know, it's probably more than we need to charge. Oh, and sorry, business requests are on the screen, by the way, because I had another business before breakfast. I'm just kind of like putting the things they're asking us for so we can look at them.
If I'm in a, if I'm somewhere and I'm having a nice time and I'm out for dinner, I know that's what I'm doing. And when I go to Sherlington in Virginia and I have to pay to park or whether it's the garage or a parking on the street. Whatever the case is, I already know that I'm committed to having to park. But that's a different place and there are plenty of parking, there's plenty of restaurants. And it's popping, it's thriving, right? But when I come to a smaller area and it's not that many restaurants, I'm coming to a specific restaurant. There's not much going on. It's, I'm not going to be, you know, urged to like leave that place just because. You know, whether it's fifty percent, fifty cent, I'm like, I can still sit here for fifty cent. I could still sit here for a dollar. I could still sit here for a dollar fifty. I could still sit here for two fifty. It it wouldn't matter if I have, if if I want to go and I'm saying I'm the patron. So at that point, I just think that. You know, it is a fine balance because I don't, I'm not necessarily thinking that adding anything is really going to make a big difference. Because if you want to sit there, whether you're paying for it or not, you're just going to pay and stay in there. I I just think one thing is that, you know, there is limited parking. There's nothing that we can do about that, but pretty much direct people and help restaurants, these businesses. Direct their client, their patrons to like, hey, pay, this is where that free parking is. This is where you can have that parking and stay longer as long as you want. I think we just probably need to do a better job with. When we make this decision to rerouting them, helping businesses route them and specifically OTI. Because of where he is strategically placed. And it seems like some of those parking areas get taken up real fast. It's only on one side of the street. But then also he has a great opportunity because it's not, it doesn't take, you don't have to walk too far from Governor Bowie to his restaurant. So I I think there's. Some opportunity there just to help them get their positions to go.
And I see Darnell has his hand up, but I just want to let you know, we are actually working on trying to see what other parking areas, surface parking lots we can acquire. And there was actually just a conversation with Greenwell about that today, trying to. Trying to get more surface parking, especially on that end of the street. So and I think the signage is key. And we also kind of talked about having a map, which is, you know, harder when you're parking. But like if we have a map, we could put on signs that say, here's free parking type thing. Darnell.
Alright, not that this is specifically for one way or another, but just sort of in agreeance with Commissioner Duckett. When I go places, I don't necessarily think, oh, I'm going to stay this particular amount of time because it's costly to park here. But what I do want us to sort of think about is. If we do reduce the rates. At that point, at what point does it become? Let's say not feasible to enforce technically after hours. At what point is it not worth it as far as the custom signage and also the longevity? From my understanding, this is sort of become. A topic of discussion at least three to four times now since twenty eighteen. And I believe the signage has been changed twice. And all of the signage is technically custom. So I just want us to, you know, sort of think of, you know, those figures if we're going to reduce because they do come as an added cost. And with whatever's going on at the Valerio lot or the Herbert building, if. Those become things that, you know, attract more of a crowd, then we'll be looking in maybe a year or two to change the signage again. So I just want us to think of longevity. Thank you.
I think that's why chief is going to get the more generic signage. And also like it will just have the hours, not the rates on it, I believe. Is that correct, chief?
Yes, just just more of the hours, the times and the days because those signs are. Very expensive to keep changing out, you know, every year, year and a half and, you know.
They're confusing too.
So once we get the hours, the times, they'll be set a standard, which you normally see in most metered parking areas. So everybody understands you can park this many hours doing these dates. I mean, during these days and during these times, and that's it. So it's a generic, nice sign that everybody can understand and everybody will know what they're doing.
So we'll do some signage. Which I think everyone's on the same page on signage. So I don't think we have to actually. Anyone's not pro easy, clear signage with directions to free parking. Okay, so that one's easy. And we're back to kind of this question, I think, of. This six AM to ten PM and are we going to charge a rate from till ten PM? Or are we going to shut off the meters? And I think Commissioner. Colbert is here and hasn't spoken yet, but if the other commissioners have other things to add, just speak up.
This is Commissioner Hancher here. I'm somewhat in agreement with the business request. I like free after five, but you know, I think it's for their advantage. But I was also wondering one thing could. You know, if we need to charge for parking and we're talking about, you know, something going on at the library, something going on here. What about if? You know, this is just an idea. I don't know logistically how, what if we just don't enforce certain events or whatnot? That's just a question I have.
Not enforcement, not enforcing is not really a good option because then that just creates more problems. Because when we don't enforce, then people are complaining that somebody is sitting too long. And now we have a whole nother issue that, okay, you said you were going to enforce in twenty twenty two and now you're not doing it. Which is kind of why we're in this situation right now because we didn't have enforcement for so many years. And now that we're starting to have it, even though it's on a.
For catching.
It's causing more, it's causing more problems because we're now enforcing. What people haven't been doing for years. So that's part of the issue.
Okay, thank you.
And I think not enforcing for events, oh, sorry, Charles, is different. Like, because then if each individual business asks us to not enforce for their event, it starts to be a lot. Alright, go ahead, Charles.
Yeah, so Commissioner Culver here, I was going to say, so I think part of at least some of what I, you know, have heard in different conversations. Some of the. Negative thoughts behind, you know, the the enforcement piece was, you know. Like chief said, we hadn't been enforcing and then we, you know, were able to staff up and then we started enforcing. So it was a little bit of shock that this is something that's coming down, even though the signs have been there for a while. I think having clear signage is key. I think having the expectation that people, you know, follow the signage is reasonable. While I understand, you know, the, some of the thought behind shutting meters off after. Businesses, I do kind of wonder. How that works out on an equity basis because there are businesses that aren't open after five PM. So the entire time that their business is open, their customers would be. You know, paying, paying for parking while. Businesses who are open beyond that point, who may have, you know, their bulk of clientele after that, aren't necessarily paying for it. So I think I I wonder if there's a little bit of a bit of an equity issue there that I think is resolved by keeping the mirrors on. So that's just kind of. Where my thoughts are in some of, in some of that.
And when you mentioned that and the equity issue, I think that it gives the businesses an opportunity to to stay open longer. If they want to stay open longer, then that's their opportunity to make, to 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 extend their hours. I mean, I don't think that one business should have to be penalized or or feel like they're being penalized just because they set their hours at a certain time and shut down what other businesses are like geared towards. Receiving most of their patrons in the evening time. So OTI, Lido's, and which is always busy, and Domino's, those are predominantly businesses that are. Getting most of their patrons, I would say, in the evening hours. So when you think about equity, that that could be equity. Because I think I I think that those places that are open, like some of those other restaurants. They're getting most of their business during the daytime hours, but they have an opportunity to leave their businesses open longer if they want.
I guess I'm going to just ask. Like each commissioner to say like. I think we should have the meters on between X time and X time and charge this amount and that amount. What? So I'll I'll start. I think we should have the meters from six AM to six PM. Or even seven AM to to six PM and then. And ten PM, charging two fifty between the seven AM and the six PM. And then charging a dollar between six PM and ten PM. That's. My stance on it. So Commissioner Duckett.
I'm, I I agree with the one dollar. I I think that's fair. I think that also gives us the continued, put us in a place where we continue to enforce and is something that is reasonable.
Commissioner Colbert.
Sorry, sorry for the crying baby in the background, but I do agree with the reduced rate, the one dollar after, you know, seven, seven PM and then having the meters on till ten.
And then Commissioner Hancher.
I believe it should be seven AM to five PM, two dollars free every other time.
Okay, so seven to five. Okay, so seven to five. Okay. Okay, so it sounds like we have three people who are for like a two fifty, one dollar situation and one person that's for a two dollar free situation. The only tweak was I heard Commissioner Colbert say seven PM instead of six PM. Was that the crying baby or is that the, the number you wanna go with?
And I'm saying six PM.
Yeah, that's what you and I both said.
Yeah, I, I said seven PM, but six or seven, I mean, if we're, we're getting to a voting point, I, I can be moved by an hour.
We're not getting to a voting point necessarily, but I want to know how to tell Kyle to redraft this legislation. So so that's Kyle, the direction that we're gonna have you draft based on the three of our opinions is a seven to six, two fifty, six to ten, one dollar. And then that way, we know at least that three of us are generally in support of that when we're getting to a voting. And then Commissioner Handcheck, um, at the twenty-second meeting, you can say what you think should happen. We can have conversation again. Um, but I just want to get us progressing so that we can vote on this and get it off our agenda.
Thank you.
So, um, I guess these, you know, business requests are here. And these, some of these aren't really related to the um, resolution, but I want you to know that they're things we're looking into. So like allowing businesses to buy meter times for patrons. That's something that is possible through our current, um, what's the word?
Parking vendor, yeah.
Parking vendor and it's gonna be possible through Park Mobile. So we're gonna look into that. Package was presented to them a couple of years ago and no one talked on it, but we'll look into re-presenting that package. Um, short-term quick access in and out parking is going to have an expense because it requires us to put meters in the spaces that alert the code or the parking enforcement. Um, that someone's been there over the time. So that cost is being looked into. And will be presented with that when it comes. Curbside parking is related to this short-term quick access in and out parking, but there is a feeling of an equity issue because Lido's has a sign that says there's curbside parking. Um, and, but if people park in that curbside parking without paying the meter, they are ticketed because it's not town curbside parking. Uh, it's just a sign they have up. So we're asking them to remove it, um, but just so everyone is aware of that. Um, and then towing in private lots is an issue. Um, and hopefully we're gonna be able to have some conversations with the private lot owners and see if there's a way we can partner together and benefit everybody. Just so y'all know, that's like internally stuff, staff and um, Greenwell, et cetera, are working on.
I have a question about the sign in front of Lido's. Um, is that not a, uh, you know, something that we can, like, it, who put this on there? Is that the sign that, I remember we had some signs going up during twenty twenty for, you know, to help the businesses with like quick parking and pickup. Is that still like our sign that has been left there or what?
It's a leftover from, so that's the space that was fifteen-minute carryout. We had that there for Domino's, Lido's and and then we had another one, we had three total. Um, and so that kind of Lido's, I guess the chain sent those out to all the stores. It got put up on that pole and kind of forgotten about, then we went, we, our program removed our sign. But theirs was still on that state highway pole, but uh, state highways pulling that pole that it's on anyways during their sidewalk project. So it'll be gone by December thirty at the Lido's sign first. But uh, yeah, they confirmed, the mayor confirmed with chief that if people are parked there, they've, we've, they've gotten tickets on that side is just a
But is that not kind of misleading? I mean, it's very misleading because, I mean, wow, and we still ticket them? That's why I'm like, I think maybe they should just cover the sign, put a big sticker over the sign, something because it's, I would hate to park there. And then get a ticket for it. And I'm thinking, well, I thought it was a free spot. It says it's free, just put a black sticker over it.
We're gonna ask them to take it down because actually, we didn't really get, we gave them sort of permission to have those spots, but we told them that it was over with and they just haven't taken it down. And they're one of the only vendors or businesses that has their own lot as well. So the curb size should be their lot, not our street meters.
Agree.
I think, um, we may have already asked them to take it down or that may be something that um, was an email sent out that we just need to follow up on probably. Okay.
Just give us direction on that. If it's not taken down uh, within the time allotted, then we'll go ahead and remove it.
Yeah, I would say if it's still up there by Monday, we can take it down. I'll just tell Jeff that.
That works. Darnell has wrenches. We're good. Thank you. Okay, so it sounds like we know how we're moving forward on this. There will be, um, potentially after Kyle and Attorney Best have a discussion, it may be necessary to amend the ordinance in conjunction with this, which will slow us down as ordinances do. We are trying to avoid amending the ordinance because it needs amendments that Unicode is going to come to us and say, hey, these things need to be amended and we don't know what they are right now. And so we're trying to see if we can avoid it. But if we have to, we will amend it and then we'll amend it again when Unicode has stuff.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Chief when I get back into the um, office Tuesday about some of the things that Attorney Best brought up. Um, but even if you guys pass this in November, these rates wouldn't go until back till uh, January, just to give us time to program the meters, get the signage up and all that and the communication. Going, so.
Um, so we will move on to the government structure accountability and ethics board. I think we've all had a chance to read all this. I'm just gonna say that Commissioner Colbert and Handshot, um, Commissioner Duckett did ask to just remove this. I kind of pushed back on that because I committed to y'all to make sure we did it in conjunction with the financial package. Um, so I want to give everyone a chance to say what they want to say about it and um, kind of guide town staff. Sorry, go ahead.
You know, I was gonna say, so I think, you know, we've kind of had this discussion before. I think it's important that uh, you know, just based on, at least from my understanding, some of the instances that happened earlier this year, uh, with not only staffing, but also, you know, some volunteer committees and whatnot, we need to have some type of ethics uh, ordinance in place. I think this kind of gets us to, you know, gets us to a, a good point. There's probably some, a little bit of room for uh, tweaking it a little bit more, but I do think that you know, moving forward with an ethics ordinance, an ethics board is something that we as a town need to do. I know that's a, a, a broad statement, but I wanna at least, you know, keep that door open. This is something that
Would we say in deference to the request to kind of have less things on the agenda? That, because we do have an ethics ordinance. It just doesn't have any teeth. That what we'll do is everyone will be provided with the ethics ordinance. Um, and maybe we put it as like an agenda item on the work session, but like, we're not gonna discuss it just so it's in the packet. I, I don't know how that works. We can just say, we're not gonna really discuss this in depth this time. We're gonna talk about it in January or whatever. That way you have the information so you can review it. Um, and everyone can kind of mow over what Kevin's had to said, say, another thing I'm recommending is like, you know, when you're at MML and you meet commissioners or mayors in other towns, like, so one thing I've done is reached out to other mayors or commissioners that I've met and asked them about their ethics boards and their ethics ordinance and how they work. So is everyone good with an approach where we just do a little more research and looking into this on our own and kind of reconvene it on January? But that we get you, make sure you all have an official copy of the ethics ordinance before then.
For sure. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. So we'll move on to the RFP cleaning and media. And turn it back over to Administrator Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so we got one response for the media RFP, um, Public Communication Strategy, who's our current vendor for that. And then we got um, several other um, submissions for the cleaning side of things. In addition to these lists, we also have a, a claim, um, is our kind of interim cleaning firm that has been cleaning town hall. I think they sent theirs and just a little bit late. Um, to the game, they were kind of distracted by picking up the interim process, um, and the interim contract clean town hall. So I know we didn't want to kind of go into too much discussion. Um, the prices are in each one. And uh, I don't know, we didn't, usually we go into closed session to discuss pros and cons as to not air dirty laundry, um, for some of these companies. But um, we only have one, yeah. Just let me know what, what you got. And I know we maybe
Yeah, we'll have to
Session next week and
Kind of figure that out. Yeah.
Yeah, so we can do that.
I'm just gonna say there's a pretty big range here of prices, like I wrote out all the prices. And I'm definitely interested in, I mean, I already know what staff has to say about two of these companies. Um, and I can share that in a closed session. But also what Director Bond is thinking with regard to other agencies and, you know, kind of what he hears about those agencies or if any of the other, you know, staff or department heads know anything. Um, so maybe think about that, guys, and you could even give us kind of a memo of your thoughts on it. Um, any staff member, just because this is impacting staff more than it's impacting anyone else. So we'll put this aside for a closed session, which we're gonna discuss at the end of the meeting and figure out how to handle it. So, um, next thing on the agenda, unless does that, does anyone else want to talk about it generally rather than specifically?
So Mayor, I had a que- question. Um, if you all are talking about the cleaning crew at the closed session, should we be on that just to talk about our part briefly and then get off?
Yeah, I mean, you guys can kind of make the call if you want to send in a memo with your information or if you want to jump on and say your part. I think that's reasonable, um, whichever way you want to do it when we schedule it. All right, so preliminary agenda for next meeting is gonna be the first thing of the agenda is gonna be the first fifteen minutes of the public hearing for the um, financial package. Um, we will also introduce ordinance to, to ordinances, twenty twenty-two oh seven and twenty twenty-two oh eight, which is the historic committee moving to twenty twenty-two oh eight and twenty twenty-two oh eight being revised. We will vote on the resident assistance board. Um, we will either introduce or vote on the parking legislative package depending on if it has an ordinance in it. Um, and then we will vote on the RFP for cleaning and media. Now, and we'll vote on the snowplow. Um, and possibly some of these other administrative items are gonna need a board vote that Kyle's gonna bring up. So it's mainly voting on stuff we've really talked mostly to death so far, so it should just be kind of a let's go through and vote on this stuff meeting. And then we'll have a clean agenda going into December. You can pick up some of the other stuff. Thoughts, concerns, discussion?
So I'm, I'm, I'm generally fine with, with that agenda. I'm gonna uh, uh, lob a wrench in here. Just kind of, kind of see where it goes, but I know we, I know there's been some discussion about the, the number of items that we're planning to tackle over the next month or two. Uh, and while I'm not necessarily, while I will say, I'm not necessarily in favor of uh, pushing too many things to the right. So one of the things I would suggest, and we can have this discussion hours at some other point, uh, is would it be worth scheduling one or two additional work sessions sometime between now and January? Uh, just so that we're able to have the time again to digest, but that we're still making sure we're making forward progress on these things. I would be open to it and I'll, I'll leave that for, for others to, to comment on.
And uh, for me, I'm not open to that. I think what we have so far is a pretty much full. My plate is full. And I think that what we need to do is not pack the agenda because I don't know what the rush is. Uh, there are things that we have yet to address that we're still adding on more things to the agenda. So I think that if we just work on what we currently have, stop packing the agenda, we'll meet all of our goals and objectives. I don't have the additional time.
Commissioner Handcheck here, I'm uh, in agreement with Commissioner Colbert. Thank you.
And I'm just gonna say, as long as we can vote on this stuff and not go kind of backwards and forwards on it, then it will clear off and the agenda won't feel so packed. So that's kind of where I'm at. So everyone has this information. Hopefully on the twenty-second, we can vote on it. That clears us off and we can bring up all those other items that are waiting in the wings. Uh, or maybe we said no to, but now I'm, people are saying, let's talk about it again. For December and I will, w- what, we're gonna have to, the December meeting's gonna be wonky because it's closer to the twenty-second. So we'll try and figure out how to get that all to you guys in a timely manner. So if, if, if we want to have another work, work session, I'm fine having other work sessions to discuss it more, but it sounds like we're not gonna have full attendance, so that creates that challenge.
If we have a quorum, it should be okay, no?
I mean, but then, you know, people are gonna feel like they didn't have time to discuss it. So I think we kind of just have to we have to just discuss them, discuss it at these meetings, kind of. I should keep us sa- by saying like how I did with parking ordinance, this is what I think. What does everyone think? Write it down. There's consensus, move forward with it.
I'm just worried if you're just gonna keep adding up if we keep bringing stuff off, that's all.
I don't think we're gonna take anything off. Once we vote on this stuff, because a lot of this stuff has been on the agenda for a long time. And then the other thing is, once we vote on the financial package, part of our problem is that we keep having to approve to two thousand three thousand dollar purchases because of inflation. So once that financial package is voted on and goes into effect, which is gonna be mid-January, I think, um, then we won't have all that cluttering up things anymore. So that will be helpful. So um, but I do want to turn it back over to Kyle to talk about the administrative stuff because this is little stuff that's come up in between.
No, um, so just a real quick, there's just, I have a couple of short things, um, that may result in needing a board uh, vote on at the uh, town meeting. The next town meeting, um, one of the things is the uh, service lane dumpster agreement. Uh, I don't know if you guys remember, we've had some residents complaining, especially on service lane, there were some dumpsters placed by a property owner probably decades ago on a piece, little plot of land that's a partial, that's owned by the post office, but the town has a shared use agreement that started in nineteen ninety-five because there's storm drains there. Um, so the dumpsters were sitting there. We really um, didn't start doing our digging on who actually owns the property until all these complaints came out, but the dumpsters are overflowing and vultures there and illegal dumping. And uh, we just got hit, town hall guy with a huge inundation of these complaints. So we looked into it and realized that the dumpsters were placed on public right of way without any known written consent um, from the town because it's a joint venue. The property owner needed permission from the post office and the town. Um, and so they prop, we talked to the property owner. They went, they got the permission from the post office and now they've come to the town uh, for permission and Attorney Best drafted up a letter um, that the board can approve. It pretty much says, yes, you can keep the dumpsters there just because of the unique situation. We're trying not to have them put, there's really no other place to put the dumpsters. So we're trying to work with the business owner and the businesses that use those dumpsters. But also address the issues of the residents who have been complaining. So one of the requirements is enclosing the dumpster area with a six-foot privacy fence. So that way it deters illegal dumping. It helps screen in all the trash, if the trash does blow out. And it contains it in there. And then we're also looking into a small fee, annual fee for having it on that property, because it's like extra maintenance, public access to clean the lot and all that. And then also if they do start leaving dumpsters open and trash is spewing out, there is a kind of legal precaution we can take in, in small claims court. That's one attorney best. So it would be the easiest course of action. So he's kind of redrafting the letter a little bit to reflect the, the annual fee and then those kind of penalties if they violate the agreement. So I know in the packet, there's some background, there's the initial agreement from 1995, there's an overhead view, and then there's the letter from the post office granting them permission. I can answer any questions or thoughts you guys may have.
I'm just glad we're finally here getting it done.
So there's no concerns with that. We can put that on the agenda for approval. That way we can execute the agreement and get those concerns alleviated from the residents. The next is town staffs looking to apply for a grant, PAMC, planning aid to municipalities. So with park and planning for, we're looking to get some money funding from them for trail studies, implementation on a couple of the park and planning trails through the town and just getting, paying and hiring a firm, possibly Meaden Hunt or someone like that, just do a feasibility study. See like where we'd have to get consent, whose property it goes through, an estimated cost so that we can start, once those, that study is done, we can bring that study and apply for actual construction and implementation grants. It's just hard to try and ask for money to build it when we really don't know what that cost is ahead of time.
I say good.
Okay, we'll, we'll put that together. And then we have one last one.
Hold on, I think Commissioner Duckett might have wanted to say something.
Yeah, I was wondering, are these items, are these items that you're adding to the, to the next meeting? The service dumpster, this resolution and the one you're about to talk about, is that all that you're looking to discuss for the next meeting?
Uh, yeah. Report approval on them in the town meeting.
In the next.
Yeah, we just need to prepare with our votes.
Is a vote or approval?
Now, the one that is kind of the most time sensitive is something I've discussed with Attorney Best, the cable franchise agreement. So I think they started back 10, 12 years ago. The municipalities entered into kind of a joint discussion with Prince George's County and Comcast on a cable franchise agreement. It's for some reason suddenly came to light in the past two weeks. So it's not like we've been holding on to the secret ordinance. They literally just had a meeting on Friday about it and asked everyone to have this passed and their municipalities by January. And so I talked to Attorney, I know, I talked to Attorney Best about it. He's a key representative, so a couple of other clients. And he doesn't even think that the county council is going to be able to vote on it in time. But if we're able to, he's going to put it up, bring it over. They sent out a sample ordinance. He's asking to kind of move the timeline up on that. It's a pretty standard. It's already been negotiated. It's favorable to the town. It's the same conditions from the 1999 cable franchise ordinance that the cattle, town was a part of. So he's asking us to introduce it, the member town meeting voted it, at the December town meeting. That way it's, it's passed by January. By the timeframe that the, it's coalition of towns in Prince George's County had asked it to happen.
Question. It's almost identical to the existing cable franchise ordinance.
Yeah.
How many pages in it is it? I know that's a ridiculous, but I think Commissioner Duckett wants that answer too.
I can tell you right now, he's, I have a, well, I have the version that they sent out. He's working on the.
I mean, we can introduce it with that, because we have to introduce it. That's what a lot of this stuff is, is introducing all these ordinances.
Uh, three pages.
Okay. I think we can probably handle that.
I thought it was going to be, the 1999 version's like 25 pages.
Oh, my God. And Kyle, what we'll do is internally in the office, we'll have you work your introductions to like a minute and a half for each item on the agenda for next time.
Um, so that's cable franchise. And then we have one last one, the police car license plate reader chief. I sent an email to the board a little bit ago. Chief applied for and received a grant for $30,000 to outfit two of our police cruisers with license plate readers, so they get real time data. So if a stolen vehicle drive past them, ding, 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 it alerts in the cruiser. Versus now they kind of have to type each individual plate into the system. So if we're able to approve this in, in November, December, chief can get the stuff ordered and then we can get the reimbursement by the grant by the April 1st deadline. I didn't say anything on that, chief.
Yes, I'm going to beg that you all do this for November, because it was a, I think it was a $5 million grant. So which means they have two or three vendors that will be actually installing easy, this equipment. And the sooner we can get in the front of the line, the better, because what happens is you have to spend the money before June of next year. If you don't, we lose it. And the other thing is, there's a possibility that I may be able to get another $30,000 maybe in January. So I would like to have the first group approved so that we can say we have it and that we're going to get this stuff installed. So we could possibly, that gives us a strong chance to get in a possible second $30,000 grant as well. So I asked that you could please vote on this so that we could get this started, because it's, it was very unique. The, the state police usually don't give out money like this and we got it approved the next day. So.
This is kind of like the playground. Except for it's license plate reader, like, we got the money, the board just has to say yes, and then carry on.
I'm all for removing antiquated equipment anyway. So I think it's great.
This is the latest technology. I mean, it is the state of the art and that's why they gave it in a grant. And that's why it's like, hey, let's jump on this now, because this is normally $30,000 paying for it. So. Thanks.
All right. Is that everything? Okay.
That's
cool. So we, we have this closed session. Right. So John, we're going to have to vote either way. We have to vote to go into closed session and vote no, right? Because we advertised it? Help, help me with the technicalities of this.
Yeah, the problem is we don't have everyone in attendance. So you're basically going to just basically adjourn the meeting. Because you can adjourn it without having the closed session, because there, there is nothing, you can't have a closed session right now.
Okay.
We're just in the meeting and that's going to be it. And then we're just going to have to reschedule the closed meet, the closed session. I'll just have to get rescheduled at a later, later date in time. And we'll have to make sure 24 hours in advance notice, so it gets posted. It'll have to be a special town meeting, so you can open the meeting and then go into closed session.
So, and it will be to discuss these same things, which I think several of us feel have to be discussed before the 22nd, before we vote. I mean, Commissioner Lot isn't here to tell us if she's able to attend a closed session at another time. But can the four of us all attend a closed session on November 15th at 7 o'clock? Which is next Tuesday.
Is the reason why, just confirm, is the reason why we have to do this is because Commissioner Lot present?
Yeah, we were having these closed sessions and like everyone wasn't coming, so we moved them to the end of meetings. But now again, we have this problem of not
When they're at the quorum, you could do it.
No, part of the Open Meetings Act is you have to have consent of the, of the governed, which means everyone has to be intended. Because it could be that she doesn't want to attend because she disagrees with whatever's being happening in the closed session. So that's why you have to have everybody attend a closed session.
Okay, I'm available every Tuesday.
Uh, just one question, just one question. Sorry, Commissioner Hatchett. One question. So could someone on the board reach out to her just to find out, hey, will you be able to attend the, the closed session today? So that we don't have to postpone this thing.
Okay.
If she's available, that you could do that. You could call her right now and you can ask her if she wants to hop on right now.
I'm going to add
closed session.
Hold tight, because. Okay, Commissioner Lot, she'll, she's going to attend the closed session. She's available.
So can we all vote to go into closed session, then she can join us?
Yeah, nope. She has to be on the call right now to vote, go into closed session with all of you. I have to have vote from all of you to go into a closed session.
Let me call her back and ask.
John's getting us in order, so. That's what we have him for. Thank you. Do we want to do the last few slides while they work that out, John? So the public feels like they got everything.
We can do that real quick.
Yeah.
Hang on one second. Okay, there's this one.
Yes. And if you're a veteran, we have, we have 30 veterans, according to the census. So if you're a veteran or you know a veteran, if you can let us know, because we would like to be able to honor everyone individually as well.
And a reminder about the Christmas Town tree lighting and Christmas Town market, which is going to be on December the 3rd, Saturday from 1 until 5, Commissioner Duckett and Commissioner Lot and the town staff and, and town residents are putting together a wonderful day to celebrate the holidays. So we hope that you all will come out and join us.
Close session. While we're sitting here also.
Can you send the link to out to Commissioner Lot?
I did. I sent it to her earlier tonight to her personal as well as to her commissioner email. I emailed it to your personal. I did it after I spoke to you.
Tell her to go on the search bar and do.
If Commissioner Duckett wants to have the phone there, we can do it that way. That's fine, because we do have a quorum.
Okay, so he said if I'm on here.
That we wouldn't have to hold everybody up.
Say you're on. So, wait a minute. She's safe, Commissioner.
President Franklin, do you want me to read the closed session statement?
Oh, yeah. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Under general provisions, three, Article 3-305B, one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. And number 14, before a contract is awarded or bids are opened to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid proposal. A public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process. The Board of Town Commissioners proposed to go into closed session on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, following the November boardwork session to discuss employee issues and media cleaning proposals.
So we'll keep. Sorry. So is there a motion to go into closed session under these general provisions?
Yeah, so move.
Is there a second? John, you will call the vote?
Will do. President Franklin.
Hi.
Mr. Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hansett.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
She's in the, she's not one of the participants. She's
One minute, I'll move her over. Vote to the panelist. One moment. All right, Commissioner Lot, how do you vote?
Hi.
All right, we're now in closed session.
All right. And if we can have anyone who is from staff who can talk to us about the cleaning, come over with us. And we'll switch over to that link.
You all were sent a link earlier today, confidential link, so you should have it.
All right.
John, can you send it to me? Because I don't have it.
I will send it to you, sir.
I don't have it as well, John.
Darnell, I sent it to you earlier today.
Let me double check.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks.